Notice is hereby given of a Friendswood City Council regular meeting to be held at 5:00 PM on Monday, December 8th, 2018, at Friendswood City Hall, Council Chambers 910 South Friendswood Drive, Friendswood, Texas regarding the items of business according to the agenda listed below. We'll call the meeting to order. Call up Pastor Jim Bass, my favorite pastor, to give the invocation, so if you'll stand, and when he's done, we'll say the pledges.
I'm only a stray because I'm actually his pastor, so. Let's pray. Lord, we give you thanks for the opportunity to gather together here in this council meeting. Lord, we ask that you grant each member of this council your wisdom and grace as they consider and the needs of this community. We give you thanks for this community, and we feel so blessed by it, by all that you have provided for us. And Lord, especially on this day, we do remember the life and the service of President George Bush, his example of public service, his example of devotion, and of putting others ahead of himself. Lord, that is our prayer, that we might live out that example in our lives. We ask that you be with our police officers, our first responders, our servicemen and women, all who put themselves to keep us safe and protected. All this we ask in your name. Amen.
Thanks, Jim. Place the flag. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Honor the Texas flag. I pledge allegiance to thee, Texas, one state, under God, one and indivisible. Anybody want to speak? Do we get any cards? All right, we'll skip over that one. We'll get right into work session. 5A utility rates. Who's the lucky presenter?
Well, we'll probably tag team it this evening, but Mayor and Council, we have here tonight, Nalisa Hedden. She is the consultant that the city contracted with the update to our utility rates, and she's here this evening to give a short presentation on that process, and will help out from time to time on some of the slides.
Good evening, Honorable Mayor and Council members. I appreciate your time this evening. Please interrupt and ask questions as you need to. I want to make sure that you have all the information you need this evening. Again, as your Senator and Manager announced, my name is Nalisa Hedden, and I have had the honor of working with your community not only this time, but several years ago in performing a cost of service and rate design study. So, thank you for having me back. This evening, we'll be going through and talking about some background on what's happening industry-wide with water utilities. We'll then zoom in on the city of Friendswood and talk about the findings and recommendations of the report at this point. Before I get into all of that, I do want to draw your attention to the quote at the bottom of the screen. When the well is dry, we learn the worth of water. And unfortunately, I have to give you this message, and I give this message lots. This obviously was many moons ago when this quote was made, but quite frankly, it's what we're seeing happening in the water utility industry today. We're seeing this nationwide. We're seeing it both literally as well as figuratively. Literally, we have parts of our country and our communities where our water is running dry. We know this in this Houston metroplex area when we had to conquer groundwater subsidence issues. We see this in El Paso, for example, where they're making national headlines converting drinking water to sewage effluent, and they're having to address those very real water supply issues. We also see this more figuratively as we address infrastructure issues. Specifically, we're seeing two areas. One is just building new infrastructures, extremely expensive to keep up with the needs of growth. And two, what the American Waterworks Association calls an infrastructure crisis. This is happening nationwide. We have utility infrastructure that was put into the ground 30, 40, 50, 60, 70 years ago. A lot of that infrastructure was originally funded with community block grant money or developer-funded, or even if the community did pay for that infrastructure, it's long since been paid off. That infrastructure now needs to be rehabilitated or replaced, and it comes at a cost. Utility rates don't have that cost in it today, and we're having to put that cost in it. And unfortunately, we see that burden and impact on our utility rates. It's an unfortunate part, but I tell you, you're not alone. Utilities across the state of Texas and throughout the country are addressing the same issue. As Mr. Franklin pointed out, we have to learn the worth of water. I make the argument that we, as a community and a society as a whole, inherently undervalue water. We see symptoms of our inherent undervaluation of water in our day-to-day lives. I venture to guess most people in this room are guilty of turning on the faucet, letting water go right down the drain while we wait for the shower to heat up. We do that when we're loading our dishwashers, brushing our teeth, and most of us have beautiful green lawns that come with water being put on those lawns, and we have to learn the worth of that. If we look at the spectrum that I call the economic reality of water, we see that the first rung on there is that water has a value. If we structure our rates correctly, it's the value most people place on it, which is the check we write to our water utility every month. That's what most of us think of the value of our water. But if we continue down, we find out that it's critical to industry and therefore our economy. We find out it's a building block of our communities. We can't even have a gas station come in without water, wastewater. And the most important point in reality of water is that it's literally the only commodity we physically cannot survive without. We can't live without it. We have a very interesting and difficult dichotomy as managers of water utilities presented to you, which is that you have a commodity that's so critical, we cannot survive without it, yet we undervalue it to the point where we literally pour it down the drain. And as we continue on this journey with water in today's world, we're having to shift that dichotomy and learn the value of that utility. In performing a cost of service study, we use a four-step approach. The approach is largely defined and described by the American Waterworks Association, and we'll go through each of those steps in detail. The first step of the process is to set what we call revenue requirements. These are the revenues we need to structure our rates to recover. We use what's called a cash basis methodology. Important parts of cash basis methodology is we include our operations and maintenance expenses. We work with your staff to establish one normal operation. So, we start off with your 2019 budget. We look backwards, and then we look forward. We look backwards to make sure that we don't have any abnormal conditions, old large one-time expenditure, things of that nature. And then we also look forward to use it as a planning tool to make sure it's providing your staff with what they need to meet your next five years of service. Next element we include is debt service. We look at your existing debt plus projections of future debt needs, and we'll talk about that in more detail in a moment. And third, we look at any cash capital outlay and revenue and reserve requirements. What we do not include, no depreciation expense, that's a paper expenditure, and no return on investment or profit. This is a break-even analysis. We're just trying to allow the city to have the revenues you need to operate from one year to the next. We included a projection of approximately $40 million in new debt to be issued this year and in 2021. That's a big increase in your debt and is one of the biggest driving forces for the recommendations we have coming forward. That being said, I'd like your staff to go ahead and step in now and talk a little bit about that $40 million number and what those projects are.
Thank you, Nalisa. Council, you may recall, this slide was included during the budget discussion a few times this past summer and early fall. It entails a listing of projects over the next five years totaling $39 million in debt. Of these, a handful of, or majority of them, are contractual obligations that the city of Friendswood has with our partners. For instance, we're currently receiving surface water from the city of Houston's southeast water purification plant near Pasadena. That plant is partnershiped with the city of Friendswood, city of Houston, city of Pasadena, Lake City, and a number of other municipalities in our region. As Nalisa pointed out, we're obligated to be on surface water in the Harris and Galveston County portions of Texas, and as such, we have to get a steady stream of water from a renewable surface facility, and that treatment plant represents that. Well, as a partner, the plant has various components in its infrastructure that they need replacing. One of the projects in this next five years is to replace a 42-inch water line that's the main source of water to the city of Friendswood's two take points. There's one on the north end of town near Timber Creek Golf Course, and there's one on the, still the north end of town, but a little further south, near Black Hawk and 528. The cost of that project for the city of Friendswood alone is $12.5 million. In addition to that, you may recall, a few years back, we had a conversation with regard to our wastewater treatment plant, and the issue we were facing at the time was inflow and infiltration issues, where stormwater during major heavy rain events were making their ways into our sanitary sewer system and inundating the wastewater treatment plant off of West Bay Area Boulevard. As part of that effort, a third clarifier was built, but we also committed to TCUQ and our partners in that wastewater treatment plant, which are Harris County MUD 55, Baybrook MUD 1, and the city of Houston, that we would address our inflow and infiltration issues. So, you'll see several million dollars in the next five years in which we're going to replace segments of our dated sanitary sewer lines, 50, 60-year-plus years in age, with more updated newer pipes and stuff that don't let stormwater seep into the system. Now, I mentioned a number of the projects that are listed, and if you would like, we can go through a listing individually and show you pictures of each of those tonight. Patrick has prepared that information. Our contractual obligations, so we have to tackle these in the next five years, or we're going to be in violation of our agreements with our partners. There are a handful of these projects, however, if council is so inclined, that we may be able to make this five-year plan into a seven or potentially an eight-year plan, so that there's not quite as big of impact on our debt structure. Later this evening, you have an item on the council agenda to approve the revenue bonds that were issued today for the first round of these projects, approximately $20 million of revenue bonds. The second issuance hasn't occurred yet. The second issuance that Nalisa pointed out was going to take place in 2021. If council is so inclined, we could look at potentially breaking it up into another, instead of one more issuance of 20 million, maybe 10 million, and another 10 million or some combination thereof. But would you all like to go through each of these one at a time, or do you all want to continue the presentation, and then if there's questions later on, we can?
I think I'd like to just proceed. You know, like you said, Mo, we've seen this list. We saw it through the budget cycle, and I think when we get to the sticker shock page, I just wasn't smart enough during the budget cycle to ask, okay, we've talked about issuing debt, and we all know that's coming, and we can pay for that debt through raising our rates, but I never was smart enough at the time to ask, how much are we going to raise our rates? So, you know, when we get to that, that...
Sure. And let me point out this, as Katina and I were just talking about this. This is a circular process. So, to the extent it's pointed out, you want to stretch it out. It's a phone call away, and we'll run as many scenarios as we need to run to get you to a plan that makes sense for this community. That being said, right now, again, two issuances, approximately $20 million in 2019, and then another $20 million in two years from now. What that does to your revenue requirements means that you need to go from about $9.18, or $9.1 million to $10.5 million in five years for your water, and just shy of $6 million up to $7.5 million for your sewer. What you're seeing there is that a lot of the projects today are water-related, and then the 2021 issuance, we're stacking on some more sewer projects. One of the things you have to understand within this, we also have some inflation and other factors there, but the biggest factor, of course, is this new debt. The next step in our analysis is to functionalize those revenue requirements. And I promise you, even though spell check says it's not a word, in the ratemaking world, it is a word. And what we're doing there is we're using a process described by the AWWA as the base extra-capacity methodology. What this process does is recognize how a water utility is built. It's built with extra capacity to handle times of peak demand. All the engineers love those great words. All the normal people go, what is that supposed to mean? So, I'm going to use my favorite example, which is a restaurant. When you go to your local restaurant at 7 o'clock on a Friday night, it's a popular restaurant, it's probably built. We have to wait for a half hour, 45 minutes to even get in. Same restaurant at 2 o'clock on a Wednesday, completely idle, nobody's there, it's almost a ghost town. By average, the customers that restaurant serves in a 24-hour period, maybe it serves a dozen customers per hour, but it has 100 tables. Why? Because that restaurant was built with extra capacity for times of peak demand. Just like our restaurant, our water utility is built the same way. It's built for July, when everybody in the city is watering their lawn, running their dishwasher, their washing machine, everything at the same time. By law, your utility has to have this extra capacity to handle times of peak demand. There's a cost impact to that. For our restaurant, we have to have more land, a bigger building, we have lots more capital costs. Then with the capital cost, we have to heat and cool it. That means larger heater, which costs more to maintain. We have to have more staff, et cetera, et cetera. Our water utility has the same issue. The American Waterworks Association gives us a process to isolate those costs. The first category of costs we isolate are base cost of service, which is the cost of meeting average daily demands. If we got to live in a hypothetical world where nobody peaked, that would be our theoretical cost. Second category are extra-capacity costs, which is the cost of meeting these peaking demands on the system. And the third category is our customer cost of service, which is meter reading, billing, things of that nature. From there, we then start to allocate costs to classes of customers. We recognize that customers use water very differently. In this example, you'll see Customer X, where we've charted their use from one month to the next, very little deviation in their demand. Customer Y, however, has this huge peak or spike in their demand. Customer Y is the customer who has, requires us to have all of that extra capacity on the system. Customer X, they're not putting nearly as big of a peaking burden on the system. I always give myself as an example. I used to live in Austin, and we had this great, beautiful green lawn. It seemed like a great asset when we bought the house. When you got the water bill, not so much, but our family used about 3,000 to 4,000 gallons of water every month in the winter, and then when we turned on that sprinkler system, we went up to 15,000, 20,000 gallons of water each month. That meant the city of Austin's water utility had to maintain the capacity to provide my family with 20,000 gallons of water a month, even though I only used that for three months out of the year. So, what we're doing is we're identifying the customer classes that are putting these peaking demands on the system. Base cost of service are allocated to classes of customers, looking at their average daily demands on the system. Extra-capacity cost of service are allocated to customer classes based on their prorata share of the system extra capacity that they actually use. And then customer cost of service are based off of the number of customers. Doesn't matter how much water you use, the cost of sending somebody to read your meter is the same every month. From there, we design rates. We've worked with your city staff to identify a rate design, trying to mitigate to the best extent possible financial impacts to customers. However, we do have $40 million of debt to add into this, so we worked to refine that. What we've done here is developed three classes of customers. A residential customer class, which are your single-family residential customers. A commercial customer class, which are going to be all of your commercial buildings, including multifamily residential. And an irrigation customer class. This is going to be anybody, residential or commercial, who has a separate irrigation meter. Somebody has only one, a single-family resident has a single meter, they'll pay the residential rate, but if they have two meters, then the meter that's serving their house or their place of business would pay either the residential or commercial class, and the meter that's serving the irrigation would be, pay the irrigation rate. The recommendations at this point, starting with your base fee, there are a couple changes I wanted to make sure to talk about with your base fee. The first change is to go to a base fee that's truly based off of your meter size. Your current base fee is $15.50 for a meter one inch or smaller. That captures all, except for maybe three or four of your residential customers, and then lots of your commercials, smaller commercial businesses are also in that category. One and a half inch meters pay $27.90, and then two-inch meters and above pay $44.95. That's your current structure. We are recommending going to a base fee structure that changes based off of the size of the meter. There's several reasons for this. This is the most commonly way, used way to assess a base fee for water utilities. And the reason being is that, one, the larger the meter, it costs you more to buy it. The larger the meter, we have to replace it more frequently, so it costs more initially, it costs more to maintain. And finally, a larger meter has a greater ability to have an instantaneous demand. That's why you put a larger meter in there, so you can take lots more water at once. That puts a greater burden on the utility system. So, the American Waterworks Association has developed a meter equivalency factor chart that they recommend you apply to your base fee. So, we've applied that, but recognizing the fact that in a single year, to go from $44.95 for an eight-inch meter per month to almost $2,000 would be a pretty big hit to swallow for an eight-inch meter. I point out, you also only have one in that category. However, even your two-inch meters have a fairly big increase. So, we're recommending going to that over a five-year period of time, with the goal that in five years, all of your meters over an inch in size are paying based off of the AWWA chart, but we're just getting them a little bit at a time to get there. That would allow these customers to pay their fair share. This is what the American Waterworks Association, their prorata share and their differential, we're just moving them to that over time. In terms of the volumetric charges, we are, again, recommending the three customer classes, starting with the residential customer class. Your current, you do use a tiered fee structure, and we do recommend continuing that. What the tiered fee structure does is it, the more water you use, the higher the fee per thousand gallons, somewhat similar to taxes. So, if I use 50,000 gallons, my first 3,000 come with my base fee. From 3,000 to 10,000 gallons, I would pay the next tier, which is recommended for 2019 at $2.98. The next, 15,000 from 10,000 to 25,000 is at 3.72, and then anything above that is at 5.59. You'll see basically two changes there from 2019, and then another change in those base fees in 2021 that coincides with your next debt issuance. One of the things you'll notice is the tiers become a little bit more aggressive for the higher volume users. In the city of Friendswood, well, let me start off with the national average. The national average use, annual average, is about 7,000 gallons. City of Friendswood in a single month, city of Friendswood comes in around 10,000. So, the tiers that you're seeing set here, and the other detail there, is 3,000 gallons should get a single, maybe two- to four-person household. As I said, my family uses, a four-member household uses between 3,000 to 4,000 gallons of water in the winter months when we're not irrigating. So, you should be able to use that for indoor domestic use for an average household. You have lots more people, obviously, it's going to be more, but we try to keep that in that base fee. Getting to your average is the next tier, and then everybody above average is where we're putting a little bit more increase on those rates. This is a very common practice in water utilities for tiered rates. It's asking those who are putting the greater burden on the utility to pay a greater share of that burden, and you'll see the recommendations for increases each year. On the irrigation side of the fence, we're recommending leaving the first two tiers at their current rate for the five-year period, and just bumping up the 25,000 gallon and above tier to 5.59, and ultimately to 6.30. Again, what we found was those other lower tiers, their current rates are sufficient to meet their revenue requirements and their allocation of costs, so we're recommending leaving them alone. On the commercial side, we're recommending going from 2.90 to 5.08, and ultimately to 5.21 per thousand gallons. One of the things that's hard to comprehend, let me first hit wastewater, I apologize. On the wastewater side, we're recommending going from a base fee of $15 to $23 with annual increases each year, and then the volumetric rate goes from $2.13 up to ultimately $4.49. And again, those increases coincide with your debt issuances. In terms of impacts to customers, one of the things I give you this analysis, because when we talk about base fee, volumetric fee, it's really hard to put down, and at the end of the day, it really boils down to what a customer sees when they get their bill, what's the bottom line. And so, we're giving you a couple examples. The first example is a residential customer who uses a total of 6,000 gallons over two months. The city of Friendswood does bill every other month, so a customer is getting a bill for two months of consumption. So, their bill currently, if they use 6,000 gallons, would go from $31 to $47 in 2019, and ultimately to $51.82. A customer, that's again, mostly that customer's probably just using water for inside domestic use. The attempt there was to keep their total increase as, and that's both for water and wastewater use, we're trying to keep that so the customer has greater control over how much an increase impacts them. A residential customer who uses 20,000 gallons over two months, this is going to be kind of your average customer in an average month, would go from 71.60 to $88.70, and then at the end, $98.82. Commercial customer, we gave you an example of a two-inch meter, which is probably your most common meter size in your commercial customer range. Go from 2.05 to $358.16, and ultimately to 6.22. The reason why that increase steps up so much, though, is because of their base fee. They're being really subsidized initially by the smaller meters, and so a two-inch meter really needs to get higher. So, that's why you see a greater step in their increase. And then you'll see the same trend there with the irrigation two-inch meter. On the wastewater side, you'll see here, I've presented as well their average bill based off of consumption, and this is for a two-month bill. One of the questions I oftentimes get asked is, well, how do we compare to our neighbors? I have given you some comparisons, but before I give you the comparisons, I want to first predicate this by saying this is not a pure measurement of operational efficiency. That's because, first of all, water utilities, if I'm on groundwater and you're on surface water, we have very different cost structures, huge differences in operations, if we're partnering or purchasing water, all of those factors. We also have with city-owned utilities, we have some who pay general fund transfers for administrative services, others who don't. We have some where the general fund is actually subsidizing the utility fund. We have some utilities where general fund pays debt. So, when we look at rates, it's really just from a customer's perspective, but not a measurement of efficiency of operations of the utility. That being said, your current rates for an average bill at 20,000 gallons for a two-month period in the city of Friendswood currently would be $144.20. You'll see the proposed would go to 2.1157, but you'll see then Pearland at 2.77, Lake City at 2.12, and Alvin at 2.3. So, the recommendations are very much in par with what the communities surrounding you, surrounding you are doing and where their rates are. We, I've just given you the 2019 comparison because five years out, we'd have to look at their five-year plans as well, to be able to have a true apples-to-apples comparison. That being said, it's a lot of information. As I've As I pointed out earlier, um, to the extent we have to run more scenarios for you all, we're happy to do so and, and work with your staff. This is a, this is what we have right now, given this set of assumptions that, uh, on your C I P plan. Are there any questions?
Great job, Melissa. We appreciate you.
My pleasure, my pleasure.
Oh, sure. Jump in.
On your comparative benchmarking, the average utility bill comparison, is that average with those outliers included? The proposals, the bills that go up to six hundred? When you said there were only one or two?
Oh, no, th- th- this is an average residential.
For the one inch?
Yeah, uh, yes, ma'am.
Or two and one inch?
Yes, for a five-eighths inch mi- this is actually for a five-eighths inch meter. A lot of communities actually have a higher base fee for a three-quarter inch and a one inch. Uh, one of the things we've left is one inch and smaller because you do have quite a few one-inch residential meters. And we wanted to be sensitive to the fact that, uh, changing courses, if you will, for your residential customers who may have a one-inch meter and say, guess what? You ha- you could have had a five-eighths inch meter and we're going to double your, you know, we just didn't want to do that from a fairness perspective. Some of the other communities, if we compared a one-inch meter, they would be higher because they have a higher base fee.
I don't remember how many years ago it was you came. When was the last time you came and talked, that we, and we adjusted the rates?
Two thousand sixteen, uh, but we didn't have a, a rate change coincide with it. If, it was very minuscule at that time.
Well, we did, but, but as I recall, you presented something similar, and it was a five-year plan. And we made the change for the si- we started adding in the sizes at that time. We did change that, and some people saw it more. And as I recall, in two thousand sixteen, that was a five-year plan, and it was going to be fine. After five years, we were going to be leveled out, and now we see another big jump. So the-
The rationale for that is simply the, the issuance of debt. In that five-year window, this was pre, um, inflow and infiltration issues with, uh, with the wastewater treatment plant. This was pre-city of Houston forty-two inch water line. We knew it was in the coming years, we just didn't know when at the time. And so now we're at a five-year window in which we have to issue the thirty-nine million dollars in debt that wasn't previously in that rate structure.
So all of this is really being driven by Drake, by the, by the capital expenses?
Correct. So, and to counter that, we can look at, uh, not massaging, but extending the debt issuance so that it's not happening in such a short window of time, um, in, in turn, reducing the impact of the rates. But it will need to be tackled regardless.
Who's down here? Robert?
How did you come up with the progressive nature of charging eight-inch lines, uh, meters, four-inch meters, two-inch meters, more than like five-eighths and one inch? I've got two, two-inch meters, and I haven't seen a two hundred or a hundred and fourteen dollar bill since, for fourteen years. Uh, I irrigate quite a bit, but I, I don't understand the progressive nature of charging someone who has a two-inch line more than someone who has a five-eighths inch line. You're going to use whatever volume metrics that you're going to use, but you're going to, you're going to charge them more. I can understand some larger fee, but I don't understand charging them more and more-
Right.
-on a progressive basis.
Melissa, real quick, before you answer it, uh, Councilmember Grifon only pays the water. He doesn't pay sewer because he's not on our sewer system. So when he says he hadn't seen a two hundred dollar bill, he doesn't pay sewer.
So is that, that's, that's true. This is a water and sewer bill combined.
I have an outhouse. Kidding.
I love it. I love it.
It's the nicest outhouse in town.
I love it. Um, the base fee, uh, this is a recommendation from the American Water Works Association. And what they're recognizing is that it costs the community more. So a two-inch meter costs more to buy than a five-eighths inch meter. A two-inch meter also has to be replaced more frequently.
But you, it already costs more to buy a two-inch meter-
Sure, sure.
-or a six-inch meter. So you're, you're already recovering some of that cost.
But then when you have to-
Now you're going to charge monthly more.
Sure.
Because, because they have a bigger, they're already going to pay more because they're getting a lot more water quicker.
Right. Well, a- and that's recognizing, uh, so customers will pay a tap fee for the meter the first time, for your first meter. But then when it needs to be replaced, that replacement cost the city does pay, which again, uh, on a two-inch meter gets replaced significantly more frequently than a five-eighths inch meter. Um, and then the third reason that the A W W A recognizes again is this in, it is this instantaneous demand that a larger meter has or could have on the system. Uh, and so the A W W A is the one that kind of developed this recommendation to recognize that even though you may not use any of the water just by having that larger meter in the ground, you put a greater demand on the capa- capital cost of the system to be able to serve you for a two-inch meter's requirement of water.
Well, and I understand that, I, I understand where you're going, but it's, it's not going to be very good for me. Um, but, um, I also wanted to, uh, ask you, and I want to thank Mo for meeting with me earlier today so I could get a handle on some of this. But we're talking about forty million dollars. We've seen that spreadsheet several times, a thirty-nine million dollars. And we know how much that debt is going to cost us to service over the next twenty years. We're spreading that over twenty years.
Yes.
And, and we're looking at a five-year program where we're going to try to raise forty million dollars or off the backs of either impact fees or residential fees. So my question is, is, and thanks, Mo, for telling me this, but we have seventy-six million, five hundred and ninety dollars and a hundred and forty-eighths, uh, in total revenues for the next five years. That's not what our debt service is going to be on what would be twenty million dollars. What we're, we're really looking at, and thanks again, Mo, is operational expenses and not servicing the debt of forty million dollars. Because we already know exactly, we're going to see it here in a little bit later, how much our debt service is over twenty years. So I'm just a little concerned about either our operations or some, some other factor to get to seventy-six million dollars over five years.
And, Melissa, if you go back a few slides to the one where you put the revenue requirements, I think it was step two. Or step one, I'm sorry.
Go ahead.
Um, the seventy-six that Councilmember Grifon is referring to is the culmination of these fees here. Uh, this isn't the entirety of the debt. This includes the debt service for what we're issuing, what we've issued in years past, plus our operational cost each given year over the next five years.
So, so this is not paying for the forty million dollars in five years. This is paying for the monthly payments, um, for the debt. So, so after this five-year period, you'll still have another fifteen years to pay that off at these rates to get there, plus anything else that may or may not-
But we're planning on raising that or collecting that much money in five years. That's why I would really like to see us spread this out, if we can, over a ex- more extended period of time than a five-year period.
Sure, sure.
See what I'm saying?
Sure. So, so again, um, the-
Because we're financing it over twenty years.
Right. So you're financing over twenty years, and what's included in this, and, and we can certainly get you the backup detail there that breaks out what the operation cost is, plus existing debt, plus the new debt. And we'll certainly, absolutely, we will get that summary sheet to you all with that. What that does, though, is a lot of this cost is your operation cost, uh, as well. But what's changing here and, and that's necessitating the need for a change in your rates is adding that new debt in. And again, this is the payment plan for twenty years of debt, uh, not just, we're not trying to, to recover forty million dollars in five years. That's not what this is doing. This is recovering the new debt payments that will, the city will incur as associated with issuing two more debt issuances, one in twenty nineteen and one in twenty-one.
I will, I'll email that to council later this week.
Sally?
Along the lines of Councilmember Grifon, um, I would also like to see this spread out. You know, that's a pretty big leap for an individual, you know, that's sixty bucks every other month. I'd asked about, you know, changing to monthly billing. That might be a little easier, but I understand that's actually part of these costs that we might be paying for, rather than having an individual go and read each meter. We might be able to make that where you can, becomes, I'm going to, tech is way over my head, but it'd be automated, correct, Mo?
Yes, in the next five years, we have a project to replace all of our meters with automated meters, so we don't have to send personnel out to read them, um, manually. And in doing so, there will be some efficiencies and costs, both on a personnel side, that we currently contract with the, the firm to go read our meters, but also in terms of if we're able to go to monthly billing, uh, once we have that system in place and what efficiencies we could identify there. I will ask, the agenda item later on tonight, as far as the revenue bond issuance that took place today, it was for a twenty-year time period on debt service because historically, that's council's, uh, desires to not have debt linger longer than, and, and it's an opinion at the end of the day, what is good and what is bad. Uh, we can look at the future debt issuances, to look at it thirty years as opposed to twenty years, in which case you would have a smaller debt service requirement on an annual basis. That's an, also an option to reduce the impact on the rates. Don't need direction tonight. Obviously, we're not going to issue the next round of debt in the coming weeks. But, uh, as we get closer to that and we evaluate alternatives, that would be one of the scenarios I would look at.
My follow-up question is timing. Um, as citizens, this is something they don't get to vote on. This is just, it's an obligation that we have as the city. When would citizens begin to expect to see this increase in their bi-monthly bill?
So, uh, there's no action item tonight related to utility rates. So the soonest, assuming we had this on the next month, agenda in January, the soonest would be the April, May, um, billing. If for whatever reason, we're not able to develop something that's palatable to council, it would be later this year. Uh, but we, we can look at some other alternatives and then present some options to council.
Is initiating this with our budget cycle a possibility? Or will we cause ourselves to be in jeopardy of obligations not being met?
Um, we do run those concerns or risk any time you, uh, delay revenue enhancements. Originally, we had hoped to get this to coincide with this current fiscal year's, uh, start back October, two months back. But, um, we'll, we're, we are prepared to pay our bill, so we won't have that issue if we can't, uh, roll this out sooner.
Carl?
How much debt do we, uh, currently have associated with, uh, with water and sewer? And is any of that ready to, uh, are we prepared? Is any of that coming up on being paid off?
Uh, parts of it are.
And I guess, when or, I, I guess another thing I'd like to see is, um,
How the debt's layered?
Sort of payoff is on those debts. So I, um, you know, there may be a, a big bump at first, but it may, we might be able to tailor some, might back some of it off later as some of the older debt gets paid off.
We can look at that. I will say that our financial advisors, well as Katina and Rhonda, look at that routinely when we issue debt so that it's stabilized and it's not as drastic a jump.
Correct, yeah, I guess I just want to, that, that didn't show up in here. It's just something I'd like to see.
Sure, we, I can email that to council.
And it's, you have, um, debt service schedules in your budget document. So in the proposed budget or in the, in the budget document that we presented, pages one oh four, um, are referencing the outstanding revenue debt, our current debt. And it shows the, um, the amortization schedule for when that gets paid down.
Page one oh four?
Page one oh four.
Okay. Of the last version we pa- we got.
I will, I will email it out to council.
That'd be a lot easier.
Yeah, we'll do that.
Trish?
So these numbers, like twenty twenty-three, the numbers for water and the number for wastewater, they include the projected debt increases. But do they include any projected increases in operations? Yes, they do, okay.
Mostly just inflation, though. There's not any changes or enhanced operation costs, no more, you know, new programs, nothing. It's your existing plus some inflation.
And do we subsidize out of general fund?
We do not. So this, the, the utility water and sewer fund is an enterprise fund. It's funded solely based on utility rates. There are some intergovernmental transfers depending on some operational costs that may, for instance, if part of my time is spent on water sewer stuff, it doesn't come completely out of general fund, uh, revenues. However, it's self-sufficient, it stands on its own. We don't use tax dollars to subsidize our utility system.
But if the automation comes into place, then operational costs should begin to come down, right? There should be efficiencies there?
There will be some, but it's going to be minute in the sense that our operational costs associated to our water sewer meter reading con- contracts, about a hundred and ten, a hundred and fifteen thousand a year, if I remember, eighty thousand.
It's around eighty-six thousand.
Small to begin with.
Yeah. Now, keep in mind, when you see those revenue requirements up there, that includes the water that's purchased for delivery to the home. So of that nine million dollars in twenty nineteen, several million of those are money we have to pay Houston to deliver it to the city of Friendswood in order for us to turn around and have it in, ready to go when you turn on your taps. So, I mean, it's-
And in fact, I would tag on to what Marad had just pointed out, and, and this is very common utilities, but a very small portion of your cost of this sixteen million dollars or fifteen million dollars in twenty nineteen, you have any control over. It's debt and contract costs with your partners. You're contracted to pay a pro rata share of the operating costs, and it is what it is. And unfortunately, that's, you know, y- you have just a little bit of that budget. And again, that's one of the things we will give you. We'll make sure that Marad has that, and he can send it to you tomorrow. Uh, we'll provide you with a breakdown, not only of the O and M, but what's purchased O and M versus the city's generated O and M.
And unlike the general fund side, the water sewer side, we're, if you were to look at our water sewer budget, we're thirty percent funded as far as staffing. The rest of it is contractual obligations, contracts with partners so that we're not, uh, laden with those overhead costs. So we partnered with the city of Houston, Pasadena League City, so on and so forth, on a regional water treatment plant so that the city of Friendswood didn't have to spend a hundred million dollars on our own plant. We're able to share those cross across, those costs across multiple partners.
Steve?
Just a quick question. Please provide to us, uh, the answer to this. I, I understand a two-inch meter, a three-inch meter costing a little more, but I do not understand why it wears out more, and it's not my understanding of how meters work. So if it's an orifice plate or a jet meter, I don't understand why it would, a two-inch would wear out faster. Just provide the data next time. Thank you.
We can give you that, absolutely.
All right, well, thanks a lot.
I appreciate your time.
Melissa, we appreciate you coming and sharing with us.
Thank you. And if there are any other questions or anything else, please let your staff know, and, and they know how to find you. Thank you.
Yes, we all know Marad's number. Okay, uh, item B is community development block grant disaster recovery, Galveston County Program, Houston-Galveston Area Council Method of Distribution. How many slides you got, Brian? Seventy-two?
No, no, no. Like fourteen.
When I looked, fourteen, I'm sorry. You will go very fast.
No pressure, go fast.
I got it up. All right. Ready? All right. Couple of months ago, I came to you when, basically with a community block grant for Harris County side, and now we're going to be talking about the money allocated for or that we have ability to submit applications for on the Galveston County side. So it was the amount that was awarded to the whole state. H T A C has developed a mod to distribute the amount of, throughout the cities, the local, the local areas. Um, and specifically for us, some of the terminology real quick. Community block grant. H T A C is our Houston-Galveston Area Council. The mod is the method of distribution, and L M I is a load of moderate income. So underneath this modification that they have, we have a be- ability to apply for, uh, two, right under two point seven million for infrastructure and a little over two point seven for buyouts and acquisitions. If I'm going too fast, let me know. Some of the things that are eligible, flood control, uh, retention, a restoration of bridges, streets, or even water and sewer facilities, bridges, streets, generators. Uh, we can do some, uh, rehabilitation, uh, reconstruction of, uh, publicly-owned commercial facilities, but we cannot do any dam levies, assist to privately-owned utilities, and we can't do anything that's considered general conduct of government. Some of the projects so far that have been identified, we have not identified all. That's kind of what we're in the process of doing at this point. Floater control polis, uh, projects at the Deepwood area, possibly at the Poly Ranch area. There is a project to try to combine lift station one and seventeen that was heavily damaged during Harvey. Also, the completion of, uh, Friendswood Lakes Boulevard as a cost, cost share. And also to offset some of our, um, ten percent cost match of some of the other lift stations and other projects that are now going through, if you may review.
Were there any bridges included in possibilities there?
The only bridge that we had, and that was in the other, the Harris County one, was to elevate the one, Whispering Bridge.
And we can also look at when we make application for these- And we can also look at when we make application for these funds to include Whispering Pines on that application as well. Keep in mind, the bridge project was estimated at 8.5 million. The Harris County allocation was 4.4, so it's insufficient to elevate the bridge, and this is 2.7, so we're still going to have to find matching dollars somewhere else, but we can throw that in and see if it gets funded, but.
And what did you have over at Friendswood Lakes Boulevard?
So, we have made a Houston-Galveston Area Council Transportation Improvement Program application, grant application to extend Friendswood Lakes from 528 to 2351. This would be to utilize these funds for that 20% match for evacuation purposes.
That's the tips.
That's the tips.
And buyouts and acquisition, we could use some, the funds available on outside for homes that are allocated within the floodway, ones that, homes that have previous claims, those that have not been issued any permits as well, or future repair for the BFE, so. Kind of a timeline where we're at, today we just kind of informational meeting. We've already done our letter of intent, application, the applications we made are available to public for public comment via the website, no later than the 13th, and then we'll be back before you get in January to get all the applications ratified by resolution. And then, they're all due by the end of January. Once again, we still have the LMI requirements pressing forward, but we do have the LMI requirements, exact same ones that we had over there on the Harris, for the Harris County portions. And that's an idea of, kind of, kind of the same one we showed before, but where we stand on LMI. Any questions or direction? I think that's all I have is questions, so this is not, this is certainly a public piece, but I'm sure if there's anybody has questions, they can ask it at the right time. Questions, comments?
Our big hurdle, as it always is, is the LMI hurdle, and we just have to, have to hope that the folks up the chain work with us on this.
The general end office has representation here tonight, and they promised to help us through this process, so. You're welcome.
I don't guess this could be used as that, for that infiltration problem we have with overflowing waters going into our Black Hawk.
It would be a stretch to tie it to it, but we can look at that as well.
Well, I appreciate you, Brian, for you and the Fire Marshal's Office standing on top of all this kind of FEMA recovery knowledge and keeping us, keeping our applications flowing in the right direction. It's great that we have you guys, because I know going back to even the recovery dollars that we've received already are in large part due to your efforts and your staff's efforts. So, thanks very much for being there.
It's a team effort for everybody, so.
You're the expert, you guys.
Thank you, Brian.
It's the haircut, Mayor.
Built for speed. All right, next item, drainage subcommittee update, Lee Coggins and James Stahl. I hope you don't take as long as Brian took. Take all the time you need.
Good evening, Mayor, council members, administrators. I'm back. My name is Lee Coggins, along with James Stahl. We're citizens as part of the Drainage Subcommittee, here to give you a status from back from October when we were first here. Tonight, we're going to tell you about the next phase we're into. Previously, we gave you a lot of data, a lot of information. That's because in the Six Sigma process we adopted, it was the data analysis phase. It was the data, I should say, data collection phase and data gathering class. Now, we're in the analysis phase, and what we want to share with you tonight, or several things, is that, point out to you that we're using mathematics and physics to trying to find a good solution to our problem of drainage and flooding in Friendswood, and also that as we're troubleshooting this problem, there's a lot of interesting information and challenges this committee is encountering, and we'd like to share some of that information with you as well. But as I stated before, we're in the analysis phase, and rather than just grabbing solutions off made of air, there's a scheme to our process that is actually using facts and laws of physics, okay? We're, to start things out, to help solve things, we're actually using formulas, in which we'll go over one specific formula tonight to share with you. Also, once we get some analysis done, or scenarios and mitigation plans going, we're going to use and test and validate and verify that with the model that Dr. Bediant is providing us from Rice that we've invested in. So, once that model is verified, we'll definitely make use of it to come up with sound solutions. But first of all, I need to show a definition of what, of different creek levels are like, or what we define as creek levels. We need these definitions to understand how to manage the floodwaters. A good example of this is, is take a cross-sectional area of a creek, in our case, it's Clear Creek. In these definitions, there's different zones, five of them, ideally in the blue, zones A and B, we want the water to stay within the banks of Clear Creek. Fortunately, during heavy rains, that's not possible. So, when it rains and goes over the banks, it goes into the floodway, okay? Unfortunately, there are homes in Friendswood that are in the floodway. To help us out with that is, we have on the right-hand side of this diagram approximately, or an estimate of the number or percentage of homes that are in this zone. I give credit to Mr. Kabari, your city manager, for coming up with these estimates. These are estimates based on going over a lot of information about which homes are flooded and which homes were not. So, it's about 50%. Today, you can't build in a floodway, okay? It's against regulation to build in flood for obvious reasons. The next level is the flood zone. This is the 100-year flood plane, or your chance of getting flooded in a given year of 1%. If you build in this area, you must, it's a requirement to have flood insurance. The homes here is about 30%. And then, if you're outside the flood zone, you're in, near the creek, like in Harvey, like I myself, near the creek, lots of rain, or street flooding occurs, the homes that were flooded during Harvey was about 20%, okay? But in these, in these areas, that if you built today, pour concrete or build structures, you got to mitigate using that land by possibly doing some detentions, so. So, there's no requirement that's left untouched when it comes to building in a flood-prone area. The interesting thing about this slide as a citizen, flood victim myself, is 30 years ago, we were still building in floodways, which is pretty interesting. And regulations really didn't start taking place about, till about 30 years ago in the 90s. That means, that's telling me that we're way behind on the power curve, way behind, because all the development that has taken place over the 30 years and the development to come, just look at the 45 corridor, like all that land that's going to be developed in the coming years. So, we got to get ahead on this game, and come with solutions in implementing them. Now that we have the different levels of the flood defined, let's look at the mathematics I promised that we would look at. This is the water balance equation we'll be using, or have been using. It's a rate equation, okay? I need you to think in quantity over time. Here, I'd like to use my bathtub analogy like I did last presentation, is on the left side of the equation, this is your input, this is your faucet for your bathtub, okay? You're putting so much water into your bathtub over a certain amount of time. On the right-hand side is your output rate, okay? This is your drain. This is the amount of water you're draining out of your bathtub over time. Now, if the faucet is at the same rate as your drain, drainage rate, the water level in your bathtub will remain the same. Simply the same thing as with the creek. If you put the same amount of water in the creek, as the same amount of water leaves the creek, your water level of the creek will stay steady. But unfortunately, it's more complicated than that. There are several variables involved, and on the input side, we've got the precipitation or the amount of rain that comes down in our watershed, and then where it rains, is the area. Then, on the right side of the equation is a very interesting term called evapotranspiration, which is simply the amount of water that's soaked into the ground or the amount of water that's evaporated into the air. And of course, then you've got the rate in which the water is moving downstream, and then what's called change in storage. This is your, where, instead of going directly in the creek, it may be stored in such as overflow ponds, tension ponds, reservoirs, even your backyard puddles will retain some of this rain. So, now that we got the equation, let's go in a little more detail of all these different variables. These three variables I need to point out is that unfortunately, we don't have much control. These are the driving factors in helping us find solutions. For instance, P, the participation, the amount of rain, that's all governed by rules of nature, Mother Nature. We cannot control the participation. We can forecast the participation, but how much actually falls, we don't have control over that. Same with the watershed area. We don't have, it's governed by Mother Nature as far as the elevations, and as a reminder, from last presentation in October, the water we get in Clear Creek in the Friendswood area is about, comes from us from outside of Friendswood at about 90%.
Now, how did you come up with 90%? I'm a little bit, so during Harvey, you're saying 10% came from Mother Nature right before and that rain on us?
You remember the map I showed of the area of the watershed? In comparison of how small Friendswood and the rest of the watershed? So, it's area.
Oh, area, oh, just.
Simply area.
Not really knowing what Mother Nature actually.
Right, it's, of course, if it's real local rains and heavy rains, that will make a difference depending on where your heavy rains lie, but if you take it on average of a constant rainfall across this area, that's where it comes from.
They're basing the flow based on the gauges that were read at various points along the creek, as well as knowing the various tributaries that go into Clear Creek from Pearland and Houston.
And then, E, the lovely term of evapotranspiration, you know, what's, what goes into the ground, what's evaporated, that's very insignificant, very small number, you know. I would have loved the first night, or one of the nights of Harvey, of 18 inches, that all that would have gone into the ground or evaporated in the air, but that didn't happen. So, we really can't, that doesn't play too much a part in our equation, in our analysis. What we do have the ability to control or change or play with are two variables. If you take out the E, take out the P and the A, that leaves, of course, the R, which is the rate, and the change in storage. So, let's look into the rate in a little more detail. What you can, the rate is simply as definition, it's the speed and volume of water that moves downstream of the creek. This picture best illustrates, it's a picture I took back in June in Minnesota, specifically at Rochester, Minnesota. It's the Zemba River, kind of summarizes many of these components. For one thing, you can, to help increase the velocity, you can straighten the creek. That is, take all the curves and the banks. That way, the water's not hitting land, it has a nice straight flow through to the outlet. Channelization, you widen it, as the picture shows, it allows you to move a lot more volume faster. And then, if you remove vegetation, get rid of the trees, the bushes, the grasses, it's a friction effect, that if you eliminate or reduce the friction, the water, of course, will flow faster, just like airflow over an airplane wing. So, that's one way you can control this. And then, of course, the other thing is, you know, more branches to move the water out faster. And other factors that play into this is obstructions downstream. Let's say you have buildings in the way, or bridges, as it can cause restrictions, or, you know, playground equipment, whatever the case may be, that will decrease the flow downstream. And then, playing into this is, since we get hurricanes and tropical storms around here, is the storm surge. However, storm surges historically hasn't been the source of our flooding, really. Storm surges come in the first day of a storm hurricane, brings the levels up, and usually as the eye of the storm passes through it, the surges go down, and what's left is the amount of rain we get, that rain to coming into the watershed and coming into the creek. Like for Harvey, I know storm surge wasn't an issue. What was the issue is the amount of rain. As we saw in our last presentation, is we get a lot of rain in this Gulf Coast area, more so than what's predicted. So, there's many remedies we can look at, and we'll be considering and plugging into the model. Next, I'll have James Stahl talk about Delta S, and I'll let him come up and speak on Delta S.
Council members, I can hear the children start coming here, so I feel like every time we come, there's, it's children coming in, and which is maybe a good move by you guys. Here's all the bad news, oh, look, children. Okay, so, we're going to talk about how we can store it. So, detention, both inline and offline, you can shelving, or you can creating increased area of the floodways. You can create reservoirs by damming, so we can just create a huge dam and stop all the water coming from Pearland and then leave it to other people. And then, we can increase the creek height through levies or other means. We can do channel widening, which would allow us to hold more water, and then we can increase the absorption into the soil, which we always laugh about. There's really no way that we're going to be able to do that down here, but I guess in other areas, that's something that can be done. And then, all of this, all mitigations, I mean, they provide positive impact, but only to a point. Eventually, you're going to overflow the bathtub, and so you've got to figure out a way to move the water. And so, just kind of keep that in mind. So, if you remember last time we spoke, Dr. Bediant was in, they were doing, the Rice team is doing some studies, and they're going to be working on some things. They have a validation model, if you will, against some of the data from Harvey. They'll be determining the effects of the following, the de-snagging, the bridges, bypass, channeling, outlet to the ocean, and an inline detention. So, those are just some of the main things that we're asking him to look at, and basically, he's going to come back and give us information about that. Let us know what would happen if you do those things, and then what series of things do you need to compound on top of each other. When we actually do come with a full-out recommendation, we feel it'll be necessary to, obviously, you've got to have the essential engineering. It won't have a final design, but it'll have, it'll show the effectiveness of each option. We will try to take into account, or at least make mention of the estimated costs. Obviously, we don't know what the final cost would be, but initial estimates, the design scope work and land purchases that are aligned with that. And then, as well, we'll try to discuss some of the legal, environmental, and political complications that'll exist for any of these things. For example, the joke that I just said, that we're going to dam it up, and that's a really good idea until you start to play with those types of things, and then you run into some other problems. We are still not formulating or presenting a specific recommendation, but we are making sure that we just want to go over, and we talked about it in the last meeting, and I heard it again, you know, we're, the LMI, we're seeing that issue, it's common in the GLO requirements when it relates to that. We understand also, and we want to make sure that y'all are aware of it, that many of the things that are being done upstream and all of the other things that are quote-unquote "good" for the community and the environment and the areas dealing with flooding, all of this work is based on typically a 1% model. So, they are only trying. So they are only trying to stop a one percent storm. And as we know, Harvey was not that. And we're paying close attention to the right-of-way, and housing buyout programs and ongoing recommendations will likely feature some of these things. We have been in contact with Jamie Lynn Sipinowski. Got to get it, almost. She's doing a study on the effects of sound walls and if they created more flooding. And there's, there are no studies that exist for this. She's, she's one of the first people to do this, and we obviously have some sound walls, so we're taking a high level of interest in that. Jonah Chen from the GLO has joined our team as a permanent member. And the Galveston County Commissioners are actively looking at generating county money for de-snagging Clear Creek and can tie into Houston and state, federal money to clear both sides of the creek. We may have more scenarios, like I mentioned a couple of slides ago, that Dr. Bediant would have to do, which means that we may come back to City Council for an addendum, which I guess means money. And then we hope to have our final recommendations sometime in March.
Now, when you get to your final recommendations, will there actually be plans that we could present to the U.S. Corps of Engineers and the General Land Office and the Galveston County Commissioners' office? Will we have actual recommendations and plans with possible costs? I heard you say that they would be estimates, or would we have a working plan?
So I'll take a stab at this, and then the resident experts will jump in here. We are going to look at a lot of different things, and we're going to try to do a few recommendations. So as community members, we're going to say, as a group, this is what we think, based on all the information that we've gotten. Here's what we estimate cost, here's what we estimate the plan, what it's going to take. It's my understanding that we couldn't, we don't have the authority to actually submit anything of that nature. We can only give a resource to you that you guys would then decide what you're going to have to submit.
Well, I just mentioned that because we have had studies done from many, many, many years, and we had some opportunities for some shelf, on-the-shelf type projects. We really need some very good data and updated projects that we can actually physically take to these various agencies so that they can see where Friendswood's coming from, where the Clear Creek watershed is in Friendswood and how we can do conveyance. And I was really surprised to see the Delta storage, that y'all added that as a positive, because I know a lot of people don't think storage is really worth the time, but it was a plus, so I was glad to see that. But we really need to see something that we can take shelf-ready.
And I will say that we have broached the subject with the Army Corps of Engineers. They attended one of our subcommittee meetings, and continual talks still take place with our elected officials at the state and federal levels about seeking cap funding from the Corps. And forgive me, I don't know the acronym off the top of my head this evening, but is to secure funds to evaluate these other potential projects in Friendswood along the Clear Creek watershed. And this will allow us to identify those shovel-ready projects so that we're not out of sight, out of mind.
We want to give you as much as we can, I promise you that. But there are obviously limits to what we can provide.
I think it's important to recognize, too, that the committee is not an engineering entity, and so they're going to be limited as to what they can do. I think the intent is that we'll be able, there'll be recommendations that'll be such that staff can format them in such a way to provide them to whatever agency holds the funding that we're looking for. And that, you know, they'll be conceptual in nature, but that's generally what the project scopes look like early on at the funding end. And keep in mind, they're not funded entirely. Initially, there's going to be a funding request for a study. And once the study's complete, then there's going to be a funding request for either more study or begin acquiring property, and then another funding round for actually beginning to do the construction after the engineering. You know, there'll be another funding request for engineering, then another funding request for doing the work. So it'll, the funding won't be, okay, we need to go raise this bridge over here, and we need forty million dollars to do it. It's going to be, we want to raise this bridge over here, but we need, you know, there needs to be a study to get a handle on what the costs are going to be, develop an estimate. Then there'll be another request to do the engineering, and then there'll be another request to actually do the work. Once the engineering's complete, you've actually got a hard plus or minus ten percent estimate.
Just to answer, we believe that the recommendations we're going to give are very actionable. We don't, we want to give you, we want to give council stuff that they can then go to work on.
Anything close to what you're looking for, not a hundred percent, will be the finalized product of the Rice study from Dr. Bediant. I think you're going to have the data necessary that you can use that in grant programs. You're going to be able to make recommendations and do that. As a committee, we won't, we're going to recommend to you, but we will not move that forward, but you guys will have the data and the things that you need to make that recommendation.
Well, I'm not on the committee, but I've heard some very nice things about possibly widening choke points where bridges are and how wide they actually need to be to flow water. And that's the kind of stuff that we're going to need, because that will give us actionable material.
Thanks a lot, James, Lee. You guys are doing great work. I appreciate all of you that are serving on this subcommittee. Councilmember Rocky, Councilmember Gustafson, Lee Coggins, James Stahl, Jonah Chen, thanks for stepping up. Commissioner Gary Harris is here. Ron Lovely's over there, I was getting to that side of the room. Patrick is here, Patrick Donner, Mo Rod. So appreciate all of you for all the work that you've been doing since June. There's a lot of effort going into this, and we appreciate you. So every week for six months, so it's impressive.
One thing that, Ken Clark is on the team, and I think him being on the team has got him energized on this, and he's been the one pushing the Galveston County Commissioners to pay for the de-snagging. I think that's a real positive so far that's come out of this.
Well, we knew there would be positives that came out of this, and we are seeing them. So as usual, I'm not good at estimating times on these work sessions, but I like to suspend the rules and move up eight B if we could. That is recognition for Martin Griffin. Marad, is Martin here?
He wasn't able to come at the last minute, but Chief's going to say a few words in recognition of his generous deed.
Mine will be so everbrief. Josh has got a couple of remarks, though. Martin is a local resident, so he's not going to miss this. He'll be able to watch it on TV. And then, of course, the other person we'd like to recognize is Glenn Boatwright, who's also a resident and has done some good work for us. So the timing of what we're doing here is really to acknowledge some donations. And then, of course, if you remember, Bob Bertrand made the recommendation in all of the studies that we were doing, you know, to have some high-water rescue vehicles and whatnot. And we've always had high-water rescue vehicles, and Josh is going to kind of brief you on what we've been doing here and what we'll be doing here for the next six months.
After Harvey, you know, the discussion with the Fire Department and the Police Department, we talked a little bit about integrating, you know, our rescue operations between us. And it was kind of decided at that point that the PD would kind of operate more of the heavy rescue boats, and the Fire Department would maintain and operate what they call their rigid hull inflatables. So they're kind of their auto-inflatables for some of the smaller type rescues that may take place in the community lakes and things like that around Friendswood. So we went ahead and purchased one of those rigid hull inflatables for them, and City Manager's Office, you know, approved the transfer of their heavy rescue boat to us in turn for a, you know, another rigid hull inflatable. So December last year, the PD delivered the boat, the old Fire Department boat, heavy boat, to Glenn Boatwright at Boatwright Marine, where it was originally manufactured, I think, in the early nineties. And to have some upgrades done, he added and changed some of the grab rails, added a leaning post, and some seating with additional storage on that boat. After Boatwright work was done, it was taken over to Friendswood resident Martin Griffin, who's the owner of Armadillo Blast Coat, where it was completely, you know, stripped down, bead blasted, and painted, and is currently today fully functional. At the same time that boat was being upgraded and painted, we started replacing and upgrading some of our high-water rescue vehicles with LMTVs. Those are the Light Mobility Tactical Vehicles, some of the old military-style vehicles that were originally manufactured in Sealy, Texas. So a total of four of those surplus vehicles have been purchased, or purchased to replace three of our 1970 model two-and-a-half-ton trucks, the old green trucks that we had for use with high-water rescues. And those trucks we had been using, those three trucks we had been using for the last twenty years. So November 1st of this year, the PD is starting the rehab of its original Boatwright boat, which was the, which is a 1992 boat that the Police Department purchased back in ninety-two. And again, those, some of the upgrades are being done by Boatwright. The boat needed some repairs after sustaining some of the damage from the fire hydrants, mailboxes, and tops of the cars to the hull of the boat during the Harvey rescues. Also, that 1996 140 horsepower motor is being replaced with a current 2018 150 horsepower four-stroke motor that will help us along the creeks with the experience flooding, when we experience the flooding along the creeks. The acquisition of the Fire Department boat and the upgrades to the high-water trucks and the upgrades to the old PD have been all accomplished by using the drug seizure money out of our drug seizure account approved by the City Manager's Office for that reason. So for that reason, it's pretty important that while different entities that we just saw are studying, you know, the flooding, our community, study the flooding, the community, those efforts are praiseworthy. But the PD recognizes its role when it comes to the flooding. And, you know, we're responsible for when those many 911 calls starts coming in, us and the PD and the Fire Department will be ready to respond, just like we were during Harvey, having made, you know, approximately a thousand rescues during that time. Those were accomplished also with a group of local residents, both our school districts and local churches assisted, you know, in those rescues and providing shelters for many of our residents in need. Several months ago, we had heard that a local resident made the recommendation that we, you know, we get several high-water trucks to add to our fleet. And just as I pointed out earlier, you know, we've been, we've been having that capability for the last twenty years with the high-water trucks, and we've just upgraded those trucks. So the current four trucks that we have, you know, will be wheelchair accessible, making a little bit easier loading people in the wheelchairs, and also to help make that, you know, safer. But also, we added hitches to all of those trucks so we can pull these boats and offload them. You know, we're limited with boat ramp space, but these trucks will allow, you can see how much water, so the boat will, can be virtually floated off the trailer without having to back it in. Because during Harvey, we actually lost a truck over in the park once we got the boat, you know, off the trailer. And by the time we got done with some of the rescues, you know, that water had risen over to the top of the truck. So that won't be the issue with this stuff. We can get them on and off a little bit easier. I think that's it.
Excuse me, one second. To add Deputy Roger's comments tonight, I also want to thank our Public Works Departments that were instrumental in helping with those high-water rescues as well during Harvey. It was definitely heroism on every one of y'all's parts. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
What I'd like to do now is take a brief break. These kids are going to come in here in about five minutes, and we'll do that, and then we'll move on, and we may put closed executive session at the end of the meeting. Well, thanks for coming, everybody. You know, this is fast becoming one of our favorite council agenda items. We've done this once before with our Klein Elementary School over on this side of the creek, and tonight, of course, doing Wedgewood, and it's been so great. You know, you've already seen that more pictures have been taken in this room in the last ten minutes than have ever been taken in this room. So I want to tell you a little bit of why we decided to do this, this program, getting second graders involved a little bit. One thing was, we wanted to show them a little bit about how local government works. You know, we wanted to get some students in this room, and some parents and grandparents we probably have in the room, too, see a little bit about how local government works. Want you to understand a little bit the value of community service. You know, all of us that sit up here, the elected officials, we're all volunteers in Friendswood. We don't get paid. This is a way of giving back, you know, and so I always wince when I hear the word politician, because we're not politicians, we're public servants. We're giving back, and that's the reason we do this. So we want them to understand a little bit about, you know, hey, these people sitting up here, we're all volunteers. We're all in this to give something back to this great community we live in. We're also, of course, fostering leadership development a little bit. You know, these are our future leaders right here, sitting in front of you. We see these people, we expect these people to be future leaders in this community and wherever they end up. So that is something that... And the last thing, we want to support Clear Creek ISD's character education program. So that's another reason, you know, to have these students come out here. And I hope that we'll do this again next year, so second graders next year, you know, we'll expect to schedule this again. So without further ado, let me introduce the folks that you see in front of you. First off, Mayor Noah Regner. City Attorney, the smartest person in the room, Brody Mingarelli. City Manager Logan Manning. Council Position One Bianca Ganosa. Council Position Two Hayden Scott. Council Position Three Brooklyn Gordon. Council Position Four Lojane Condria. Should I say it?
Thank you.
I was going to give him a hard time, but you know, if we could just get something out of Council Position Five, you know?
No, he's five.
Yeah, I understand. Emily Rojas didn't make it tonight, but we have Council Position Six Samuel Herring.
She's here, she's here. Emily is here. Emily! 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 There you are!
How did she even be here?
Those of us that occupy this seat are really good.
Finally! Finally! It's probably like...
Council Position Five Emily Rojas.
Okay. Thanks on you. Mayor, I'm going to turn the meeting over to you. I think the first person you're going to have speak is...
Logan.
Logan.
Logan Manning.
City Manager. Okay. I'm out.
Let's go take a break.
Mayor and Council, tonight you have before you Resolution Number 201824, declaring December 4th, 2018, Woodrow Elementary Day in Friendswood, Texas. As you know, Woodrow Elementary is part of the Clear Creek Independent School District and is an example, mayor campus, and a source of pride for our community.
Has our city attorney approved the wording of our resolution?
Have drafted the wording of the resolution and is in line with the vision statement of the city of Friendswood.
Will our city secretary please read the city's vision statement for the record?
The city of Friendswood has the following statement: As its vision, together we build our future and a friendly place to live, work, play, learn, and worship.
I will now read the resolution. A resolution of the city of Friendswood, Texas, declaring December 4th, 2018, as Woodrow Elementary School Day in the city of Friendswood, Texas. It is now time to take a vote. Do I have a motion to accept the resolution?
I move to accept the resolution as presented.
I second the motion.
Any discussion?
At Woodrow Elementary, we pledge to be kids with character.
At Woodrow Elementary, we will be honest, reliable, and worthy of trust.
We will be responsible and fair in doing what we must.
Woodrow Elementary...
Do I have a motion to accept the resolution?
I move to accept the resolution as presented.
I second the motion.
Any discussion?
At Wedgewood Elementary, we pledge to be kids with character.
At Wedgewood Elementary, we will be honest, reliable, and worthy of trust.
We will be responsible and fair in doing what we must.
Wedgewood Elementary, with our words and actions, we show that we care.
We will be good citizens and do our share.
At Wedgewood Elementary, we will respect ourselves and others, too.
We will expect the best in all we do.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor, please raise your hand. All opposed, please raise your hand. Motion passes six zero. Congratulations, Wedgewood Elementary School. This portion of the meeting is adjourned.
It was like, we picked a hammer.
All right.
Oh, my God!
I know, I know I've lost control here, but. Yeah, do that for me, Noah. He wields the power. Okay. Make this official. We are going to officially pass this resolution, I hope. So, let me read it. Resolution of City of Friendswood, Texas, declaring December 4th, 2018, as Wedgewood Elementary School Day in the City of Friendswood. Do I have a motion?
Second.
Motion is second. All in favor? All right.
Raise your hands, too.
There we go. All right.
All close.
Thank you very much, everybody, for being here. We're going to. We're going to have a reception out in the foyer for a few minutes before we have to get back to work. We are back in session. Well, we're going to do that at the end. Yes, sir. It'll go quick. So, we're going to start off with item, well, first off, let me say, do we have any people All right, so Item 8C, Presentation of the Five-Star Spirit Award for the Third Quarter of 2018 to Catherine Blanchard, Recreation Specialist, Parks and Recreation Department. Who's this Catherine Blanchard? Is that you, Katie?
As you so eloquently put, Mayor, we have Katie Blanchard here this evening, and she goes by a number of different aliases throughout the city. KB, Figgy, now Five-Star.
Awesome.
You've seen in the backup material tonight that Katie Blanchard was nominated by her peers for her outstanding activity associated with the Summer Day Program. Katie has been with Friendswood, I assume this is officially since 2012, but unofficially probably since the last 15 years or more. She's an instrumental part of our Parks Department and has done a fantastic job, I believe. She's grown up with the city, and she's going on, I think, 21, 22 years now. But we want to recognize her for outstanding service and simplifying the Friendswood-on-Track philosophy here. She definitely puts the service of others before herself, and with that, we'd like to recognize her for her activities, so. Her family is here tonight, and we'd like to her to introduce them.
Say something nice about them.
This is such a great honor, getting to speak in front of y'all. I do have my family here tonight, James and Barbara Blanchard, they also own in graphics, if that's familiar. My brother Cody, his wife Erin, my niece Carly, and my nephew Case. My brother Mitchell. And I have KFB supporters here, Office Department supporters here, and I appreciate everyone coming out and watching me, and this is a great honor to get the five-star.
I'll just say something, one more thing while pictures are being taken, that Katie and my daughter used to run around together in elementary school, and so Katie spent a lot of time at my house, so I like to think that I had a lot to do with, you know, getting her on the right track, so to speak, and good, good job, Katie. All right, no, no cards, nobody wants to talk? Item 10, City Manager's Report.
All right, Mayor and Council, this evening, we have a handful of items to discuss with you. Recently, we held the annual Fall Hall cleanup effort at Centennial Park. We had 620 cars and trucks go through the gates at Centennial. Waste connections hauled off almost 30 tons of compacted debris, almost 40 tons of roll-off debris, and four-and-a-half tons of metal box waste. We also did e-recycling for the first time in years and collected 3,500 pounds of electronic recycling material. The garage sale this year brought in $902 for Keep Friendswood Beautiful folks, and we appreciate everyone's efforts in this. I know it was yeoman's work for the volunteers and staff, and this is by far one of our better years holding Fall Hall. Upcoming events throughout the city, if you haven't noticed, it's beginning to look a lot like Christmas outside in Friendswood. Definitely a festive time of year. Santa will be making an appearance, I guess this is his second appearance, because the mayor interviewed him last week, but we'll be coming to Stevenson Park here in Friendswood a week from this, or this Saturday, sorry, not a week from anything, from this Saturday, 3:00 to 8:00 p.m. at Stevenson Park. There will be live music, entertainment, photos with Santa, a 20-ton snow hill, so it's going to snow in Friendswood, but just over here off of 518. There will also be a fireworks extravaganza following the Christmas tree lighting. Admission to the park and live entertainment is free. You can purchase wristbands from our Parks Department for your kids to ride any of the activities and the rides that are out there at the park. We encourage anyone and everyone to attend that can. There is an app that you can download for your Apple or your Android phone that has more information related to the various events and the timing for Saturday's festivities. It's called Santa in the Park 2018. Thank you, Five-Star. New this year, we also have a Keep Friendswood Beautiful Downtown Lighting Contest, where we will, encouraging folks to decorate Friendswood Drive in anticipate, anticipation of the parade, Christmas parade that's going to take place this Saturday and culminate here in Stevenson Park. We're encouraging business owners to decorate their storefronts with yard art and other festive lighting for the season. They can submit their, a photo of their, of their entry on our Facebook page. There is a lengthy link for that Facebook page, but I would just encourage folks to go to the Friendswood, Keep Friendswood Beautiful Facebook page for that entry. Be a lot easier to submit their, their photo. And then, once we receive all those photos, we will ask our Facebook users to vote on the winner, December 6th, after 10:00 p.m. If you do win, the photo will be featured in the Santa in the Park event. First, second, and third place winners will be presented with awards. First place gets the chance to be the first business listed on the new traveling light-up trophy. We're excited about that. During the parade that's, that's commissioned or chaired by our Chamber of Commerce, the library will be open Saturday, and we'll be serving hot chocolate, and the children's department will host a Christmas craft this Saturday as well, from 6:30 to 8:00. We will allow photos to be taken with Santa at the library, in addition to the Santa here at Stevenson Park. Don't ask any questions. There will be two Santas. Also, at the library, there will be a book sale on December 15th that will run through the 21st during regular library hours. During that time, patrons will be allowed, or will be, will be, wassail and cookies will be made available to them, should they so choose to partake. Also, in the library, coming up over the holiday season, New Year's Eve, there will be a party for families, December 31st, at 11:45 a.m., not p.m., for folks that want to celebrate the new year with the countdown ball drop at noon to signify the ringing into the new year.
That's what time I normally celebrate it.
Yes. I'm usually asleep by 1:00 p.m. We're getting ready for the Holiday Lighting Contest that we do in conjunction with Friendswood Fine Arts. Folks, this is the Seventh Annual Deck the House Holiday Lighting Contest. Participants throughout the community are encouraged to decorate their homes and submit for judging, where residents in the community will be allowed to vote on their favorite holiday lighting decoration. Voting will take place, will start December 6th and closes at midnight on December 13th. You can vote by going to the Friendswood Fine Arts website at friendswoodarts.com, all one word. For information, folks are encouraged to contact Friendswood Fine Arts folks at 281-996-7700. The winner will be announced on December 15th. As in years past, Friendswood was recently named one of the safest cities by Safewise based on our last year's FBI crime reports. We continually get recognized annually for the, how safe our community is, and with that, I would like to thank our police department for their efforts on receiving that recognition. And finally, for the City Manager's Report, our Hurricane Harvey update. As you heard earlier this evening, we had the Community Development Block Grant Discussion for Disaster Recovery. Our folks in the Fire Marshal's Office, Public Works and Finance Administrative Services Office continually work for reimbursements. We got another reimbursement check of $82,000, our award, this past Friday for the temporary facility that we're currently operating out of when Deepwood flooded. We're nowhere near the finish line, but we continually try to work with FEMA and state representatives to try to secure reimbursement to make Friendswood whole, and also to be better prepared for future storms with some resiliency projects. Lastly, I believe James Tony's wearing a tie that I can't quite make out from back here.
Go Cougs!
His beloved Green Wave Tulane got beat by Tulane, or by U of H, a few weeks ago, and we thought it would be a good tradition to pass that tie along from the mayor last month.
Thank you very much.
Nope.
Yes, well, the U of H has to take on Army, so we'll see how that goes. You have to wear it when U of H loses?
I probably will.
Okay, fair enough. Okay, Item 11, Discussion and Possible Action Regarding Approving a Contract with Simple Recycling. This item was placed on the table last month, so first I need a motion to take it off the table.
I'll make a motion to take it off the table.
Second.
All in favor of taking it off the table? It's off the table. Now, can I get a motion?
I'll make a motion that we, that we approve the contract with Simple, Simple Recycling.
Second.
You got a motion, a second. James, you're going to give us some.
So, as you recall, last month, we met with council to discuss the possibilities of entering into an agreement with Simple Recycling. Again, this program is a program that would be in addition to our current recycling efforts. This program will allow residents to be able to place textiles and items to be recycled at the curb, to be picked up and disposed of properly, in an effort to all reduce the amount of waste that goes into our landfills. Council instructed staff to go back out and reach out to the representatives at Simple Recycling to get a few questions answered. One in particular was the question to see whether or not they would forego an agreement with us and have a presence at our Fall Hall and Spring Sparklers only. According to the representatives, that would not be an option. The program is an all, an all program, which includes everything that they do. They did say that they would, again, allow representatives to be at our Fall Hall and Spring Sparkler, either with a boot, table, to, to offer information to the residents that come in, and to also provide them with additional bags should this program be accepted, and then also having a pickup at our Fall Hall and Spring Sparkler, so it would be included in the entire contract. A couple of other concerns council had was service calls for staff. We actually reached out to a couple of other cities and talked to them about how they implemented the program and some of the things that went along with it. Part of the education process, they did mention that they did receive a few phone calls. However, once the project got started, got on board, those calls were reduced drastically. They said over, after the program was initiated, they received less than five phone calls, and those calls lasted less than a minute. Again, in the program, along with the education, when we, when the program will be instituted, we will inform residents that there is a 1-800 number they would reach out to, to discuss any issues or have any concerns answered that they may have. Staff is always there, available to do that. Again, we would, you know, answer questions that we could, and then if not, refer them to the customer service number. Again, we do those type of things for all the programs that we have, so as far as staff's concerned, and I'm speaking for Kimberly, because she'll be the one taking those calls, that it's not going to be any added, you know, pressure on us to be able to handle those, those service calls. Another question was asked about the type of vehicles that would be going up and down the roads. That was answered in the fact that they would be using these small transit vans, so it wouldn't be a large vehicle on our streets during the presence of picking up those, those bags that would be placed at the curb. Also, we reached out to find out if there were any other cities that recently joined the program, and a list of those cities are Pearland, Rosenberg, Sugar Land, Woodlands, and then there are several other municipal utility districts within that agreement. So, the program is starting to spread throughout of Texas, and it's been well-received by a lot of other municipalities. And there was another question that was asked about accidents. After surveying the, the company, they indicated that there were no accidents within the years period in the Houston market. So, again, they were just getting started, so the data is only available for the time that they were started in that, in that particular target area. So, again, no accidents. Again, just wanted to go on record to let you know that staff does recommend approving a, an agreement with Simple Recycling, and I would like to also bring up Sherry Goen, who is the chairperson for Keep Friendswood Beautiful, and she would like to say a few words, just to let you know how this program would certainly improve the current efforts that they're doing as far as their part in recycling and making sure Friendswood stays beautiful.
Thank you, James. I'm Sherry Goen, Chairman of Keep Friendswood Beautiful, and I'm here tonight on behalf of the Keep Friendswood Beautiful Board, which we have several here with us tonight. I want to speak to you a little bit about the recycling program and some of the things is why this is important for Friendswood. First of all, I want you to know that this is a major concern for the United States. Textile recycling is a huge endeavor that is being looked at all over the country. This is being called the new frontier in recycling. The number of textiles that are going into our landfills stands at anywhere from 15 million to 16 million tons yearly. Of that, about 10 of those go directly into the landfill. We like to think that, you know, when we save our clothes and we put them in a bag, and we put them by the back door, and we have good intentions of taking them to Goodwill, or we have good intentions of taking them to some other nonprofits, actually, only about 15% of those things, items, are donated out of a total of 100 that are recyclable. So, really, we think we're doing good, but sometimes those bags sit there a few days, and then we say, or a few weeks, and then we say, okay, well, I'm just going to take it out to the curb, and they end up in the landfill. The numbers are staggering as to the number of things that are ending up in our landfill that are things that are, can be reused or reprocessed into other things. We are a country, a city, or whatever, we don't keep our clothes very We are a country, a city, or whatever, we don't keep our clothes very long. 15 years ago, people wore clothes lots and lots, over and over, saved them year to year and whatever. We don't do that anymore. 60% of the things that we buy, within a year, we're trying to get rid of them. Styles change, some people say clothes aren't made as well as they used to be. So we are pretty much of a country that if we don't like it, or we're tired of it, or it's in the closet and I don't want it, it goes in a bag and we say, okay, well, we're gonna take it to Goodwill. Maybe you do and maybe you don't. Most of the time, 85% of the time, it goes to the curb and then it goes into the landfills. And landfills are filling up fast with textiles, and there are things that can be used with these textiles. Some of the examples, and I want to, I want to point out here, we're not talking just about clothes. Think of the textiles that are in your home, bedding, pillows, blankets, those kinds of things. So these things can be used, specific textiles can be turned into stuffed toys and pillows can, are becoming car seat padding and automobile insulation. T-shirts, sheets, towels, and clothing become wiping cloths, and industries and manufacturers are always wanting wiping cloths, shop cloths, whatever you want to call them. Denim, that we throw a lot away, and they are bulky and they are heavy, denim is being turned into home insulation. Shoe soles become paving equip, paving material. And curtains and drapes, again, that falls under the textile, a specific textile, can become pillows and bedding. Sweaters and coats are becoming carpet padding, and wool clothing and materials like that become baseball and softball filling. So we're throwing away a lot of things that can go, and we call it, reused and repurposed into something else. So these things that we're talking about with the Simple Recycling Program, we're just requesting an approval for you to reduce the amount of textiles going into our local landfills and then provide an opportunity for others to use these things. Secondly, Friendswood needs to step up on our recycling efforts. Our current recycle, our curbside recycling numbers have been very good and something to be very proud of in the past. We, in this area, we were the, our numbers, according to whatever waste management company was in operation here, our numbers were all very high in the area of other cities in the area, and now we're kind of reaching the average point. So we need to look at other programs to raise our recycling numbers in Friendswood. We know that Friendswood recycles. Our curbside numbers show that. People are kids today, schools talk about it. We have a wonderful group at Friendswood High School into recycling every, every week of things from, from the campus. So we know that recycling is something that Friendswood people want to do. Grants that we write include sections on solid waste management and what our city is doing to reduce what goes into landfills. To be competitive for funding, we need to do a little bit more. Cities in our population category of 24,000 to 40,000, which is the funding category for the governor's community achievement grant of $210,000, includes area cities like Dickinson, Lake Jackson, Angleton. All three of these have recycling centers or some type of industry to help with their recycling numbers. Friendswood has no industry to help with this. We have no Dow, we have no Monsanto, and we have no recycling centers. So we have to do things harder, we have to work harder to seek programs that will increase our numbers so that we can remain competitive in, in trying to work to get these grants. The Simple Recycling Program would help with the grants on a small scale, granted, but a program like this in place in Friendswood gives evidence to these people that, that read these grants that we are at least making an attempt to get our numbers up in recycling. We talked a little bit about the burden on the city. It's, we've been fortunate in the last two years. Kimberly has done a lot of research on the Simple Recycling Program, other types of recycling programs. We've looked a lot at textile repro, textile industry and how in the last five years, this has become quite a concern in the country. So we don't want to be average. We want to jump in there and we want to get a little head start on this. It helps us in our funding, it helps in the community, and it provides an opportunity for the Keep Friendswood Beautiful people and the board and this council in Friendswood to be stewards of the environment. So I would appreciate, and so would the board, that you look at this carefully in your decision and know that we are trying to get our numbers up, we're trying to provide for the environment, and we would appreciate anything that you can do at this point with the recycling program to help us. Thank you.
Thanks, Sherri. Appreciate it. Well, personally, I like this program. I think it's a service that a lot of our citizens would avail themselves of, and I got a pile of shirts in my closet right now, I'm ready for that first bag, so I'm gonna vote for this. Any other discussion? I'm sure there is.
Mayor, I'd like to join you in that. I think this is a great program, and I would, I also am sorry to collect things in my closet, but I, I believe in this program. I would like to see us move forward with this.
Any other discussion?
My concern last month was there wasn't a strong recommendation from, from staff. So I've talked with Mo, I've heard the recommendations, so I'm fine. I just don't want to add programs that the staff is not supportive of, so that's good. I heard what I needed.
Robert?
Well, Sherri, I'm not an environmentalist, but I am a conservationist, because conservation works. I've seen it with trout and redfish in our bays and estuaries. I'm a big-time conservationist, and I only take and eat what I kill, and if, Sherri, you guys want this, I'll vote for it.
Anybody else? Okay, got a motion and a second. All in favor? All opposed. Five to two. Okay, we, we talked, item 12, we moved that resolution up already. Going to ordinances. Ordinance number T-2018-30, second and final reading of an ordinance establishing fees for ground emergency medical services. Motion and a second. Any discussion? This is the second reading. No discussion? All in favor? Pass, seven-nothing. Okay, ordinance number T-2018-31, second and final reading of an ordinance amending section 14-2 to remove the requirements for their contractor registration fees, new and renewals, and amending sections 14-63, 14-118, 14-160, 14-162, and repealing Division 6 Electrician's License sections 14-229 through 14-233 of the Code of Ordinances pertaining to electrical permits and application for licensing to be consistent with the new state laws.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion and a second. Any discussion? All in favor? Opposed? Seven-nothing. Ordinance number T-2018-32, second and final reading of an ordinance adopting an order setting a public hearing to discuss and review the updated land use assumptions and capital improvements plan and amendment of impact fees as required by Texas Local Government Code, Section 395.O53.
Motion to approve. Second.
Motion and a second. Any discussion? All in favor? Seven-nothing. Okay, let's see. Ordinance number T-2018-33, second and final reading of an ordinance approving a vacation of a portion of a public right-of-way.
Second.
Motion and a second. Any discussion? All in favor? Seven to nothing. Ordinance number T-2018-34, second and final reading of an ordinance approving a request to vacate three public waterline easements.
Second.
Motion and a second. All in favor? Seven-nothing. Ordinance number T-2018-35, second and final reading of an ordinance amending the zoning classification for a parcel comprising 55.159 acres located at 3099 FM 528, also known as 3121 FM 528, Friendswood, Texas, by granting a zone classification change from light industrial to light industrial specific use permit for NACs use 7139, other amusement and recreation industries shooting ranges. Motion and a second. All in favor? Seven-nothing. Okay, item G, ordinance number T-2018-38, first and final reading of an ordinance authorizing the issuance and sale of City of Friendswood, Texas Waterworks and Sewer Systems Revenue Bonds Series 2018. Hang on a second, I'm gonna make this motion. I move to adopt an ordinance authorizing the issuance and sale of City of Friendswood, Texas Waterworks and Sewer Systems Revenue Bonds Series 2018 and approving all other matters incident thereto.
Second.
Motion and a second.
Before you vote, Mayor, we did go out to the market today, and our financial advisor, John Robuck, is here to let you know how that went.
Mayor, council members, John Robuck, BOK Financial, on the screen. We have a brief presentation, final pricing results of the sale that we did this morning. As you know, I like to start off with the bond buyer index. Again, this is a snapshot of the municipal marketplace. We did sell revenue bonds today, so we're gonna focus on the red line, the bond buyer 25 bond index. You'll notice since we were out here on November 5th, that number's dropped. We've gone down about almost 23 basis points, down to 4.68%, so the market was a lot better than we were on November 5th. And next page is the sources of funds. We did sell 20,170,000 in bonds. Investors were willing to pay a premium of 1,569,000. We were able to fund debt service reserve fund, which is a requirement for reserve, revenue bonds, excuse me, water sewer revenue bonds, of 1,500,000, less the expenses, which generated proceeds of $20 million, and the all cost transfer rate was a 3.569%. When I was out here November 5th, we were showing on a conservative basis 4.02%, so we came a lot better than that, and as a result, the overall debt service requirements and the average annual debt service requirements is a lot lower than we showed you on November 5th. And that's what this page is here. Starting from left to right, the, the left column obviously is fiscal year ending, 2019, and then the current debt service requirements of the city for the water and sewer debt, plus the new principal and new interest on the 2018 bonds, and then the final column there on the far right is the total annual debt service requirements for the water and sewer fund. And then schedule of events, we are down there at the bottom. Today, we're asking you to approve the sale on December 3rd, and then on December 27th will close, at which point the city will receive the $20 million in proceeds. Very happy with the results. We watched the weeks following up to the sale, the market continued to glow lower, the yields get lower, which is great, and actually, there's prediction that rates will go back up tomorrow because, as you know, Friday, the markets are closed, I mean, excuse me, Wednesday, the markets are closed, and so everybody's trying to get their bond issues, and Tuesday, they're going, Wednesday, so I want to say we got lucky, but I think we got lucky.
Good job, John. All skill, I'm sure.
It's, it's because y'all's rating, safest city, great management, great staff, so that was, that was brought up.
Good-looking council.
That was, yeah, no, yeah, that was brought up too, right?
Earlier, earlier council.
Exactly, right. Okay, we've got a motion and a second. All in favor? Seven-nothing. Thanks again, John.
Thank you very much.
Okay, ordinance T-2018-39, first and final reading of an ordinance adopting Budget Amendment 2 to the original general budget of the City of Fiscal, City of, for fiscal year 2018, 2019. Motion and a second. All in favor? Seven-nothing. Okay, communication from Mayor and council members. I'm gonna go first, because when I go last, these guys all talk about what I was gonna talk about. I don't have a lot to talk about, so it probably wouldn't happen today, but, you know, I wrote down a couple of words that I learned tonight, functionalization and evapotranspiration, so, you know, it's a, it's a win for me. I learned a couple of new words. You guys all saw, hopefully y'all saw Wedgewood Elementary in here tonight, that's the second of our three elementary schools to come through and, and to sit up here and get a little experience, exposure to what we're doing up here. I, I like how that thing is working out, that program is working out. I plan to do Westwood Elementary in February, so you'll see students back up here again. We're trying to not have it on the same month as a drainage update this time, so, unless you guys are planning an update in February, but we'll do, we'll do it again in February with Westwood, looking forward to that. And another thing that I, that I'm planning to put on in January as a workshop is to kick off our discussion for floating bonds, having a bond election, so we're talking about general fund bonds, possibly as early as next November. So we're gonna have a discussion in, in January to start talking about how we, how we go about that, what the process is. I see it sort of as going the way that we did in 2013, where we invite citizens to come in and volunteer to sit on committees and talk about what the city needs. We already know that we're gonna have some flood drainage-type projects to put on that bond, so we know going in that we'll have something that's gonna bubble up to the top. We want to get this project kicked off, start inviting people to sign up to sit and discuss how, because I don't want to presuppose the answer, except that, you know, there probably will be drainage and flooding stuff on there, but I'm sure there's other things that citizens will come together and, and tell us that we should be looking at. So we're gonna kick that off in January, and with that, I will go down to Carl.
Well, being as this is the last meeting of the year, Merry Christmas and best holiday wishes to everybody. I would like to remind everybody that there are a number of children across Texas and the United States who don't have homes, and if you've got room in your home and you've got room in your heart, please consider adoption next year. Thank you.
I too would like to wish everybody a Merry Christmas and a Happy New Year, as someone who has a college-age son coming home in a couple of weeks. For all those young adults traveling, I pray that everybody returns safely to Friendswood and, and enjoy your time with your family. It's a special time of year.
Stock the fridge. Robert?
I ditto the holiday sentiments. Merry Christmas and Happy New Year. It is my birthday on Christmas Day, so that's gonna be a fun time for me. I do have a public announcement that I would like to put out there. The U.S. Corps of Engineers, in partnership with the General Land Office, will be holding an open public forum and questioning answers on the Coastal Texas Protection and Restoration Feasibility Study that will be held at the Galveston Island Convention Center on 12/12 at 5:30 p.m. You can get more information about that, and you can attend that if you want to. It's at www.coaststudy.texas.gov. And I also want to mention that the Texas General Land Office will be opening an office in Texas City at 600 Interstate 45, Suite 130, and anyone who has been harmed by Harvey, they have an assistance program called the Homeowners Assistance Program. It's totaling about $1.098 billion for rebuilding and rehabilitation of homes that were damaged during Hurricane Harvey. And if you want more information about that program, go to http forward slash, forward slash recovery.texas.gov. And everybody else, Happy New Year.
Thanks, Robert. Trish?
I'd also like to say I hope everyone has a happy holiday and finds peace in their faith and warmth of family and friends, and Happy New Year.
Well, I'll continue the trend. Merry Christmas, Happy New Year. I would also like to congratulate our PD one more time for the Safewise Safe Award. I'd also like to mention Steve and I will be at the Friends of Historical Society Annual Tree Lighting tomorrow night at the Brown Museum. It'll begin at 7:00, and we generally have a children's choir from Friends Church that come by and sing. And I'd also like to, PD also has the Blue Santa Program, so if you're wanting to reach out, but you want the gifts that you, it's unwrapped toys, generally what people like, they do stay in our area. That is the one and only program you can donate to. That is the one and only program you can donate to. They'll stay here in our area, so I'd like to promote the Blue Santa program as well, so.
Steve.
Yeah, have a great holidays. For those of you that, we do have a live theater in Friendswood, and I'm in the Christmas show, which is comedy. I will be playing a woman who's a cosmetic saleswoman. I'm going to probably have to buy up all the negatives from the pictures, I'm sure. Yeah, trust me, it's a comedy. You know, a year ago, I played a preacher in Catana, Hutton Roof, and my wife said it was more of a stretch seeing me as a preacher than me as a woman. So, I don't know what that means. But anyway, I would encourage you all, we do have live theater in Friendswood. It's a nice little theater. It's right in front of the police station. It's called the Purple Box Theater. The show is the two weekends before the holiday, and it's ten bucks, and it's a nice little theater, and it's a really funny comedy. And there's a lot of people in the cast, and so they drowned all me out.
Thank you. Okay, down to consent agenda.
I'll make the motion.
Second.
Motion and a second. All in favor? Seven-nothing. One last item, item six, closed executive session. Communication from the public regarding executive session topics. Anybody want to talk to us? Council may convene into executive session in accordance with Texas Government Code pursuant to Section 551.087, deliberation regarding economic development negotiations to deliberate the offer of a financial or other incentive to a business prospect, and Section 551.072, deliberation regarding real property with possible discussion and action related thereto an open session. Convening in the executive session, we'll come back hopefully shortly to adjourn. We are reconvened from executive session and adjourned.